I'll call the Wood Village City Council meeting to order January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and at six P. M. The council, one of the councillors would like to read our land acknowledgements.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whoever, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. The Chinookian people known as the Clackamas and Cascades are the indigenous people of the land now inhabited by the city of Wood Village and other areas of the Columbia River. The village of now referred to as the Ni Shoclee was located near today's Blue Lake Park. Ancestral life of these people included a seasonal round of resource gathering and stewardship from the Wapato fields and fishing areas of the Columbia River to the cedar and huckleberry gathering areas of the High Cascades. Introduced disease from early settlers dramatically reduced the number of these people. They signed the Willamette Valley Treaty of eighteen fifty-five with the United States government and were forcibly removed to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation. We thank the descendants of these tribes for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands since time immemorial. We also acknowledge the systematic policies of genocide, relocation, and assimilation that still impacts many indigenous Native American families today. We are honored by the collective work of many native nations, leaders, and families who are demonstrating the resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, and creativity. We are honored to be guests upon these lands.
Thank you councillor and let the record show that all councillors are present and Pat councillor Smith is virtual. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
We will now move to the swearing in of our newly elected councillors.
And so if we can have councillors Tan and Rios Campos join Caroline up front here for the oath. Councillor Smith, you can just sit where you are and repeat along after her.
Okay.
And welcome family members to our council meeting to help support and honor your family as we swear them in.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, you'll repeat after her, she'll say a few words, you'll repeat them all together.
I state your name.
Pat, can you hear that?
Yes, I hear that. Are we doing this one at a time or all together?
All together.
All right.
So Pat, just say, I state your name.
I Patricia Smith.
Being duly sworn on oath, say.
Being duly sworn on oath.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution. I missed the last part, I'm sorry.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Wood Village Charter of nineteen fifty-three as amended to date.
And the Wood Village Charter of nineteen, eighteen fifty-three as amended to date.
And will perform my duties as councilperson.
And will perform my duties as councilperson.
Of the city of Wood Village.
Of the city of Wood Village.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations councillors.
Congratulations.
And we do have certificates of election for everyone. Councillor Smith, we were gonna just kind of throw it at the webcam for you to catch it, but we'll probably just deliver it next, later this week.
Okay, that's fine.
And councillor Smith is at home because she's taking care of a broken arm and so that's why she's not with us tonight.
Yeah, it was a Happy New Year's present.
That's right.
Little too much celebration.
No, it was a dog walk in the morning on New Year's Eve. No celebrating.
We're gonna move on to the election of the mayor and the council president in just a minute because we do have, we will have a new mayor and as soon as we hold this election. And I have a few comments to make before we move there. The first is related to two people, Rita Dirks and Stanley Dirks. They are moving out of the city, in fact, as they've already moved, to a new home in Eagle Creek. And as I thought about Rita and Stan, they have been in this city since nineteen, well, see, close to nineteen, yeah, cause ninety-one, he came with them. They tried to leave him, but he's, anyway, thanks Greg, and I, this is, the reason I wanted to do this is first, if you look at the Stanley and Rita Dirks conference room there, when we built this city hall, council had some conversations and talked about who might we dedicate a portion, a portion or a plaque or who might that be? And the council decided that we would dedicate that room to Stanley and Rita Dirks. And they now have moved out of the city, but I just couldn't quite get over it, so I wanna make sure that we get them plaques to take to their new home. So we're gonna prepare those plaques and we'll be able to invite them to maybe next meeting or the following meeting if the mayor will allow it. And we can present plaques. For, just for the record here tonight, Rita Dirks, she had eight years in volunteer work with the city. She works with the Parks Committee in December of ninety-five through two thousand and three. Stanley and most everybody sitting here has seen Stan at one of our meetings, either Urban Renewal, City Council, Planning Commission, Budget Committee. But he's, he had the Budget Committee March nineteen ninety-nine to December two thousand and three, December twenty, December twenty twenty to the December twenty twenty-four, City Council two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen, Urban Renewal from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four, and Planning Commission from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four. So I'd take off my shoes if I was gonna count up all those years, so I had toes to count on, but there's a lot of years there of volunteer work, so I wanna make sure that we recognize them. I wanted to read this into the, excuse me, the minutes tonight and again, we'll present them with plaques soon. My other mayors, my other comments has to do with the mayor. And let me just make a few comments and then we'll move into the election of a new mayor and a council president. But over the last two years that I've been mayor, I just tell this council this and staff, I've enjoyed being the mayor. Proud to serve the council and proud to serve citizens like we have here tonight as the mayor. And when I decided to at least have my name considered for mayor two years ago, there were about three things really that I was focused on. And one was to build, continue to build a shared leadership approach to the council and staff and this community. I also knew that we had some important work coming, as in a fire contract and other kinds of work with our cities of Fairview and Troutdale and Gresham. So I knew we needed to build, continue to build strong relationships with our three cities and focus on really a strong voice from not only Wood Village, but a stronger voice for East County. While representing Wood Village and our other cities, we really needed to work at bringing our voices and our communities together so that in East County, we have a voice and that was important for me. And I also wanted to continue our work with the homeless. We were, the homeless work doesn't end, it's gonna continue. But I know I had a, I had an opinion that we needed to have greater accountability and responsibility for the homeless individuals that were living in our city and our surrounding areas and sometimes in our parks. So I knew I wanted to approach that in a little bit different direction. So saying all that, none of that is possible to make progress and whatever progress that we may have made, none of that's possible by the mayor themselves. So again, that's why my thanks go out to this council. Greg, you know, I've had to put up with you for meetings throughout these two years, but your work as a city manager makes the work as the, for the mayor pretty simple. So I do appreciate the staff and Greg certainly the work that you're doing and the way that you work with the mayor to move us forward. So with that, let's see if we can get a mayor and a new council president elected here. So I will move forward with first the election of our mayor and then I will turn the gavel over to the mayor and then the mayor will conduct the election for our council president. Nominations are open for mayor, council.
I'd like to nominate councillor Rios Campos for mayor.
Council, it's been nominated council Rio Campus, is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Pat, I saw your lips move, but I didn't hear you. Thank you. Passes unanimously, Mayor Council Rio Campus. You're going to have a chance now to move over to this seat and conduct the next portion of this so we can have a council president. So congratulations.
We've got a lot of shifting to do here.
Yes. All right, let me get my stuff out of your way. Start reading my notes again.
I didn't have any notes, so you can go rewind.
All right, well, congratulations councillor.
Before moving on, I just wanna thank Mayor Minor for his leadership, his trust in the council and just really putting the city in a position to continue to move forward. In a lot of these areas that he mentioned, I don't think could have been possible without his leadership taking us there, so thank you and I have some big shoes to fill, so.
Okay, thank you.
So now we'll move on to the election of council president.
I'd like to nominate Dara Tan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dara Tan is our new council president.
Congratulations councillor.
I'm not getting much.
I might as well sit down in the car. Yes, you are, but that's where you need to be.
Okay. You can be the one const. Oh, okay.
Okay.
That one there.
And there.
Okay.
Playing musical chairs and musical cups.
Oh, thank you.
That's your cup? Go on. Okay.
Now we will continue the meeting with citizen commons on non-agenda items?
Yes, and we do have one mayor. This comes from Christine Bierman from our Parks Commission, but actually comes from her role as an educator and interest in literacy. She's part of a program that can be, that can get a grant for three hundred dollars to put lending libraries in and around communities. So for those who are not familiar with lending libraries, those little typically wooden structures, usually on curbside in front of homes or various businesses and kind of take a book, leave a book and assist kind of on the honor system, but there are grants to support that. So I thought, well, we'll take it to council, see if you'd all be supportive of her applying for it, she has to apply for it as part of her involvement in this program and participate in it. The city can't, but she can apply for it and then put one in the city, we thought, right here out in front of city halls, park, city hall, civic center. If it does go through, we thought we could also then maybe partner with the library and as a recycling out old books, just if we need to restack and refill, we could have a stash of books here to help make sure it has books for, for people.
Thank you. Now we'll move to our public safety report.
Hey, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks. I just wanna echo a lot of the comments that have served me with you as mayor and I really look forward to working with you as mayor. We value our partnership as we move forward here, so, and congratulations. I really don't have anything super interesting to report to you on this report. Looking at the reports, if you'll notice, five stolen vehicles were listed. I don't know what happened with this transposing of facts, but there's actually only one on the twenty-second from the Walmart parking lot, so those, that is an inaccurate figure.
That's good.
And I'm sure that everybody noticed the large percentage of hit and run accidents in this report.
Yeah.
Doing some research to those, two of those were actually not hit and runs, they were just coded as hit and runs when they were called in, so there was actually an exchange of information. One was an alleged door ding at Walmart, we weren't able to confirm that and one was not a crash at all and then another one was just double coded because the victim had called in later, so you can take five off of that list that were on there already.
And chief, when you said miscoded like it was an accident, but nobody left the scene, is that, is that what?
So with hit and runs, this, this happens frequently where somebody will call in, they'll, they'll have been involved in an accident and then they'll call in, they think the other driver's not stopping.
And
I see. Then the driver stops, but the initial coding of the call comes out as a hit and run, so.
All right, thanks.
And then our new report, reported crime report, you may have noticed that there's an eleven percent increase in property crime. Most of that is theft related and that's pretty common during the holiday season unfortunately, so.
It's what related?
It's pretty common during the holiday season, shoplifts, so theft related. But other than that, there weren't any major calls that I wanted to report on unless you had some concerns about when you saw, so.
Any questions from the council?
Just another comment, while the, some of the crime was up, the person crime was down as I look at that sixty percent from the same day.
Yeah, that's what's nice about this report too, is you can kind of see a historical view from all the way back to nineteen twenty-two on these, so.
Certainly a positive there.
Absolutely.
Councillor Smith, any comments, questions?
No, I'm satisfied with that, I'm glad the hit and runs were not as bad as it looked like.
I have a question and I shared this question with you earlier. With hearing some concerns within the community of the new administration coming in in a couple of weeks, could you share what the procedure is, what Multnomah County Sheriff's stance is on immigration status and information sharing?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for the question. First and foremost, as you know, we value our partnership and we serve the citizens of Multnomah County, including the citizens of Wood Village. Oregon's actually the state with the oldest sanctuary state law, which was codified in nineteen eighty-seven, so we're bound by state law and we're also bound by our policy. And these public documents are facing on our website if anybody wants to research them, but our policy is under seven hundred. And then in addition to that, Multnomah County did put forward a resolution, the county council did, just to solidify the sanctuary county status. I say all that to say, we are here for the citizens of Multnomah County, we do not enforce federal law, we enforce state law, we're certified by the state. Some things on that to talk about is that, like I said, our primary mission is public safety in Multnomah County. And it's vital to this mission that the community members feel comfortable interacting with us and interacting with the court process and being, you know, if they're a victim of a crime, not having fear for reporting and as a witness of a crime without fear of us enforcing federal immigration law, we do not enforce federal immigration law. We do value the work that the United States Department of Homeland Security does, they have several facets throughout their organization, one of those being the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. But our mission at MCSO does not encompass the enforcement of federal immigration law and we have no enforcement authority or active role in regards to federal immigration law. This is true for all of our public safety roles, patrol, corrections, investigations throughout our organization. We follow state and federal law and we do not hold individuals on custody on the basis of immigrations and customs enforcement detainers. We don't use our facilities, property, money, equipment, technology, or personnel for the purposes of investigating, detecting, apprehending, arresting, detaining, or holding individuals for immigration enforcement. And then just to, just to reemphasize the state law on that, it's mostly codified in Oregon Revised Statute eight oh one alpha eight two zero. And that states Oregon public bodies and law enforcement agencies can generally not inquire about immigration status or be involved in federal immigration enforcement efforts. You cannot be arrested from a court facility while you're traveling to or from court with any immigration warrant except a judicial warrant or an order signed by a judge. Typically, a immigration order is gonna be an administrative order and it'll be a federal order, which again, we cannot enforce federal law and we will not be enforcing federal law. And stated local law enforcement or public agencies must refuse and reject collaboration with federal authorities for immigration enforcement purposes. So I know that's, that's over hammering at home, but the simple response to your answer is we are here to serve the citizens of Multnomah County and we're here to serve in partnership and make everyone feel comfortable to interact with law enforcement and report a crime if they need to be, so. I don't know if that answers your question, that was a long response.
Yeah, I appreciate you, you know, sharing that and, and I think the community values the partnership as well. Just quickly mention, you know, you guys were attendants of Las Posasas, which again, I think this is nine years of that partnership, so that alone just is a testament to the partnership and that, that bridge building between you guys and the community. You know, if, if per se a community member were to suspect, you know, law enforcement helping immigration, is there a number that they could reportedly safe, you know, yeah, anonymously or something of that nature? Again, just to hold accountability and transparency there.
Yeah, absolutely, if it's in the city of Wood Village, they can certainly call me directly. Also on our website, there is a reporting mechanism for any internal affairs complaints that will be investigated, so, yeah. And then other than that, they can call the on-duty supervisor. But like I said, this is pretty, pretty well solidified in our policy and state law that this will not be something we'll be involved in.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question, picking back off that, do you foresee any demonstrations as a result of like either the inauguration or in our area, I know there might be some in the Portland area.
The intelligence we have so far is indicating mostly in Portland, if there's any at all. Quite frankly, it's been pretty minimal that we've received so far. Nothing in our area though, nothing in East County whatsoever, it's mostly close to downtown, anything.
One quick, mayor, if I could, the, we've been through this, how many years ago? Probably, well, about eight years ago. Same situation, wasn't it for you, for Multnomah County?
Well, that's, so twenty sixteen is when the county council, Multnomah County Council declared the sanctuary county resolution, so there's very similar response.
It's, well, again, I appreciate your report and Mayor Rio Campus asking that question so we can read that into the record too, so.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you, thank you.
Before we leave that topic, Mr. Mayor, we've been getting a lot of questions on this too. I just wanted to note that that sanctuary law was beefed up pretty substantially in two thousand and twenty-one and if citizens have things they wanna report, there's a direct link on the Department of Justice website for people to contact the Department of Justice and they will investigate.
That's, thank you.
That's something we potentially could, I don't know if we wanna add it to the website, but make it be known.
I think it might be worth, cause every newsletter we allow, you know, space for the sheriff's office, that might be a nice future article.
Oregon Department of Justice website?
Yes, I think it's under the, I can't remember the name of the revision, the, I can't remember, I could, I can, I can email you tomorrow Greg, cause I just, I just did a memo on this a month ago.
Yeah, cause we, we've had questions in the past, pretty rare from community members, you know, is a city a sanctuary city, you know, sometimes on both sides of that question and basically respond with, yeah, state's a sanctuary state, so we follow under state law and our public safety partner falls under that law, so it's, it's, it is what.
And state law actually prohibits local agencies and local law enforcement agencies from cooperating with federal immigration enforcement laws. It, it, so it's, it's, it's really quite strong and
And pretty straightforward.
It's very straightforward, so there's plenty of legal protection for that and the, and the attorney general has a whole division that's devoted to enforcing that law, so. It's, it's, but it's good for people to know who are concerned about it and a lot of, as I mentioned, we've been getting a lot of concerns from particularly all clients who are worried. And you know, the only real exception is if there's a judicial that would be probably only issued if there was an actual criminal issue that had to be dealt with, so. So, you know, again, I'm pretty up on that because I've gotten asked that question a couple of times if you wanna know more.
Appreciate that and chief, thank you so much for sharing that answer and again, we value you guys as a partner.
Absolutely, all right.
You guys, you know, with your comments, chief, and with our legal counsel comments, I think we've, we've got that pretty well nailed down, so I hope that that is available for the rest of our community too, at least, yeah.
All right, well, thanks everybody.
All right, presentation of two thousand and twenty-four comprehensive financial report.
Mr. Mayor, council, with us tonight, we have Tara Camp from auditors to present to you the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report. With that, I'll turn it over to Tara who's joining us online.
Good evening, mayor and fellow council members, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Tara Camp and I am the partner in charge auditor for the city of Wood Village. And I'm here this evening to present the results of the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four financial statement audit. So what I'll primarily do is go over the governing body letter, which is a letter issued with the audit and it summarizes everything we're required to communicate with you and then I can also take any questions at any time. So the purpose of our audit for the city is twofold. We perform the financial statement audit, that is where we test and assess the financial statements prepared by management in order to determine if they're fairly stated. Secondly, we perform the Oregon minimum standards compliance audit required of all governments in Oregon and that is where we're looking at various laws and regulations in order to determine if the city was in compliance with those. I'll go over the results. So the results for the city are excellent. For the financial statement audit, we issued a unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion with no reservations. For state minimum standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment. And we had no management letter that was issued as part of the audit. We also note in our letter that we had no difficulties in performing and completing our audit and no disagreements with management over accounting and auditing items. The city of Wood Village with Seth and his whole team are always wonderful to work with. The work that they do is highly competent and professional, and we really appreciate all the work that you do to prepare for an audit. It's an incredible amount of work. Another thing to note is the city prepares, the type of report the city prepares is called an ACFER, which stands for Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And that is a report that gets submitted to the GFOA on an annual basis that basically grades it. So it's a much larger, more difficult comprehensive report, and the city prepares that internally. So that's another really fantastic thing that the city does. Lastly, in our letter, we cover on the last couple of pages, some future accounting items coming out. There's always new governmental accounting standards every year. And so these are good summaries so the city can be prepared for this in the future and will also work with them so that they have the tools they need to do that. Overall, excellent results for the city, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
We'll start with Counselor Smith. Any questions?
No, I do not. I'm glad to hear it. This is just wonderful and wonderful work.
Questions here for counsel?
I didn't see where we had a copy of the report itself, so.
It was emailed separately a couple of weeks ago, before the end of the calendar year.
We sent out a governing body letter, and it's also, the full report is on our website.
Okay, so I had email issues at that point and plus health issues. So I'll look back on it. So I'll just accept it that we're excellent just based on your voice. Yeah, I couldn't be happier otherwise. So I will look for it just because that's what I do, right?
Send it. That way it's at the top of your.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Well, congratulations. That, that is, again, just those, those come to us on a pretty regular basis, but it doesn't mean that the work isn't significant. So thanks, Seth, to you and your department.
Yeah, we have some very hardworking and well-trained staff that run this. And so it's trying to make the everyone's job a little bit easier, especially when the auditor comes. We try not to, we try and stay on the good side of our auditing team.
With no questions, thank you so much.
Can I just say two, two quick things? One, I just, I just want to thank Tara and her team for the work that they do, you know, helping, here's what you need to, you know, prepare for the documents they're going to be looking for so we can be prepared for their team to be efficient and effective and just the the robust work that their team does, recommendations, things to look out for. But again, obviously Seth and his team for the work that they do. I often feel guilty that, you know, I get popped in here and there, make sure I'm aware of what's going on. But, you know, since I'm not having to be actively involved, that's, that's a great sign because everything's working as it should. So just again, thanks to Tara, your team, and Seth and your team.
How many years is this?
For me or for the city?
No, for, I mean, you know, having such a.
We've had, I think, we haven't had any major opinions in my six years.
Well, and for the the actual award, I counted, I think, twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah.
They all blend together after.
No, I mean, that is just tremendous that, again, you know, you've been able to continue that, that amazing work and appreciate just you and your team, and that the city is financially stable.
Yeah, you know, some of these, you know, you get so used to hearing it, you start to just assume it's going to happen, but that isn't the case. And that's, we have cities around that aren't in that situation. So again, just even though we hear it, the work, it's, it's still, we got to recognize it and celebrate it.
Yes, like City of Gresham, they just started getting them. I think, what was it, last year or year before or something like that?
It's not how many you have, it's the fact that you're getting them.
I'm sorry, but I would have thought that the City of Gresham would have been getting them all along. But no, no, you know, anyway, I think that's all good. But when we can look back on our city, it just, it just, man, that's just phenomenal. And we thank Tara for keeping us up on our toes to keep that going, too.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Now we'll go on review of bills paid.
I don't have anything, comments on the review of bills paid, if there's any questions from council.
No questions here.
Over. Looked good to me.
Can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
I motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second that. Oh, go ahead, Pat. Pat said it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll move to ordinance one dash twenty twenty-five state shared revenue sharing program.
I need to share my screen. I'm sorry. Forgot about our. You walk away from, you miss one meeting and all, all of a, all of a sudden, all goes out the window. So we are on the state shared revenue report. There we go. So with the successful conclusion of our audit process, we're now beginning the budget process for twenty-five, twenty-six. The first step in that is to our first ordinance of the year. So the legislature graciously shares some of the revenue that they collect from the liquor tax with us. We need to elect participate in that program. The value of that program from last year is just over sixty thousand dollars. This is a ordinance so that we are authorized to participate in the program, can then budget those resources. And when we adopt the budget, we are then qualified by the state to actually receive those to provide the services that we've said we're going to provide. So this is always the first ordinance every year to make sure we get the money that's coming to us. Happy to entertain any questions or comments that the council might have.
Any questions from the council?
Nope. Go get the money. Yeah, I'll move to approve ordinance one dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution accepting the state of Oregon Shared Revenue Program for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll second.
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aries. All right, resolution one dash twenty twenty-five annual system development charges report.
All right. So after we get the money, we spend it. And so this SDC report deals with the system development charges that we collect on for all new development for water, sewer, and parks. They're restricted. They can only be spent on projects that have been identified in those master plans with an allocation for how much of that is contributing by new, new capacity to those systems. And each year, in order to charge those, we have to bring a report back to council that states how we spent that in the prior year. So included is a staff report that talks about some of all this in a little bit more detail. Just the highlights, the only fund that we actually spent this year from SDCs was on the water fund. We had budgeted ten thousand dollars for a evaluation of well three's capacity, which was identified in the water master plan from two thousand twenty-two. We actually spent a little, a little over that, but we had only budgeted for ten thousand and we've got lots of other water projects coming down the pike. So it was a ten thousand dollar expenditure on evaluating the capacity for additional pumping at well three. And as you can see, water has a fairly healthy balance in its SDC fund, so two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Sewer fund had some qualifying projects, but there was no money there. We have spent all the sewer funds on existing capital projects from prior years. There is a little bit of an oddity related to the audit for the beginning balance. There was a write down of the fair market value of the assets from held in the state from twenty-two, twenty-three, and we had to correct that in twenty-three, twenty-four. So essentially they made us lower our interest charge because the value of the assets supporting that went down at the exact moment, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three ticked over. And then afterwards, we get to correct it. So that's why there's a beginning fund balance fifty seven dollars and a negative revenue of fifty-seven dollars. It's a little weird, but it's something the auditors made us do. We didn't want to do it, but we had to. And then finally, we have some parks SDC funds that are still available. We, as you guys know, we purchased the property just on the north east corner of the former Greyhound Park from the tribes. We did a loan and have been paying that back from SDC funds. Well, we've paid it all back and we still now have a balance of about a hundred thousand dollars. We have a project budgeted this year for the design and development of that property in conjunction with a metro grant. So those are the funds that are available in twenty-four, twenty-five that can be spent. And that doesn't include anything that would come in from new development in this current year. So that's the status of our water, sewer, and parks SDC funds. Maintaining these funds and doing this tracking allows us to ensure the long-term financial stability, economic vitality, and growth of the city of Wood Village. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the council may have.
Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. Did I just interrupt somebody? Okay. Remind me, remind us, Seth, is the SDCs, they're not set by the state.
No.
Each city and each local jurisdiction can set those SDCs.
Yeah.
Okay. And do our SDCs, are they comparable to our neighboring cities? And I know we tried to do some conversation there, but.
So we changed the methodology when we did, when we had Donovan come in a year and a half ago, and we did a comparator analysis. And I believe we were actually a little bit under some of our regional cities. I think the typical cost was around, let's say, twenty-five thousand for the three of them. And that's far lower than some, like Portland, I think, was getting close to forty or fifty thousand dollars at that time.
Yeah, and that's a single family home.
Single family. But it's all based off of the projects like the trunk line, anything to go do with the wells or any park projects that are identified in the master plan.
And we set a fee. It's not necessarily a percentage of the project. Is it set on a percentage?
It's, it's basically, so you take your, your master plan and the capital improvement plan associated with it, then you figure out what part of that's replacing current facilities or enhancing current facilities and which parts actually needed for growth and, you know, enhancing your capacities. You, you take that growth portion and you kind of more or less, okay, we need X amount of dollars. And then you figure out what's your, your growth projections through different classifications, you know, residential, commercial. And those are basically allocated. We allocate it for water and sewer based on meter size because then you're kind of getting at what's the capacity they could use of, of that system. For parks, it's more of an approximation of usage. So, you know, single residential versus various commercial types, you know, may use parks a little more differently. But that's, that's how we do it. That's fairly common around the region. Some will do it based on like commercial use type. For example, like an office is going to use presumably less water than like a restaurant, for example. So some will do it more about commercial classifications. Ours is essentially meter size and the consumption ability of that meter.
Yeah, I asked the question only, I mean, to remind me myself of the SDS, SDCs, the is that as we continue to move down the, the road here and with public safety and the amount of revenue is going to have to go towards public safety, that we can, we can set these fees. So for instance, if there's a lot of wear and tear on the park because we have uses there.
So it's only for expansion? So it's not, so SDCs cannot be used for ongoing maintenance?
Federal legislation restricts the things you can charge SDC for.
Okay.
Stormwater and flood hazard mitigation is one we don't charge, and there's a few other categories. But I'm not aware of anyone who charged, in Oregon, who charges a public safety SDC on new development.
No, that would be prohibited under the statute.
Yeah, okay.
To those sort of infrastructure things. Some people do have a special, it was Public Safety Service charge that they tack on to their franchise fees or to their water utilities. But.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, that's, that's it. That satisfies my.
I'm bringing back the helpful memory.
Any other questions?
No.
And entertain, entertain the motion?
I move to approve resolution one dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution accepting the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four system developing charge report for the water, sewer, and parks.
Second. First and double second, all those in favor?
We really want this one.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Right. Financial policy.
Greg asked if I was going to take up the whole meeting and I said no. So the reason for this item tonight is there's a staff report included in your packet, but essentially, since we went through the GFOA budget award, there's a number of best practices that they encourage to just take a look at as a way of making sure that you don't just have good financial results and outcomes today, but those are also resilient and are going to continue as new council and new employees come along. So over the last eighteen months, we took a look at an investment policy that you guys approved, and then also a purchasing policy that you updated. So we sat down as a management team, we're looking at what the other kind of policies that were recommended. There's some that don't make a sense for an organization of our size, but one that did come up was the fund balance policy. We have informally kind of an oral tradition of how we set fund balances and reserves and capitals, but there's nothing that's ever been formalized or documented. And so this is one we wanted to bring to the council to see if you wanted some work done and then a policy brought forward that kind of defines what levels of fund, fund balance needs to be at for various reasons. So again, this is a recommendation. It's not a requirement from GFOA. It's a policy setting document. It's not, you're not going to tell us exactly what the money needs to be spent on. That's more of a budgetary function. But it does communicate goals and intentions of the council that then, you're not locking the future councils into it, but you are kind of blazing a trail and kind of leaving them a path to follow. So really, the, the general purpose of why we would do something like this is you want to have fund balances to mitigate some short-term risks. If you have some downturns that are unexpected in your budget, you don't want to have to come back, do mid-year cuts. Unfortunately, that's more common in the governmental world than it should be. You want to maintain operating cash. There are some governments that have to borrow or take short-term into separatory notes in order to wait for their property tax revenues to come in in November to make sure they have cash. They'll actually get payroll out the door between July and November. This also comes up with, and this looks favorably advanced sales and ratings, just kind of evaluating the overall financial strength and resiliency of the organization. So what the council would be providing based on what we bring you would be really direction on what happens, what, what are the appropriate levels? And then if we have more than, more or less than the appropriate level, what do you want staff to bring forward? So if we put together a budget and we don't have the fund balance that we've said by policy, you know, we want to have, for example, two or three months of operating cash set aside in order to make sure that we can continue operations smoothly, what do we need to do about it? Or conversely, if we have more cash than we need for these identified short-term needs, what is the priority for where that gets directed? And so we've informally, over the last few years, started building up a capital reserve and putting money away for future capital replacement. But that's been ad hoc and just a good idea that the management team sits around and says, yeah, we should, we need money for this. Formalizing this, we kind of. Shrine it and allow it to be communicated and continue to build upon rather than as just as kind of an item by it on piece by piece, à la carte, as we've been doing it. So those are the reasons and kind of some of the advantages. I didn't include a sample policy yet because this is one that, you know, the investment policy will, will need if we want to look at locking in some interest savings. The purchasing policy is something. uh locking in some interest savings. The purchasing policy is something that if we don't adopt it, we are defaulted into the um Oregon uh revised statute two ninety, two seventy-nine, which is the purchasing statute. So those ones are required. This one is more of, do you guys want something like this to propose and adopt at a future council meeting? So if you guys are interested, uh, we would incorporate any feedback that you guys might have now or, you know, future you wanna email or meet to discuss, we'll review and bring back a more comprehensive report on best practices and what some of our compared agencies are doing. And we'd bring in sample policy for council to consider to future council date. So it's kind of a simple question. Do you guys want us to take a look at this or not?
Note to council?
Well, first of all, we are regulated by the state on what we can and cannot do. And in my opinion, we're highly regulated on uh especially capital funds and the, how we can uh swap money from one budget to another. And we're, I mean, I feel like that, that uh we're walking on eggshells in a lot of ways, especially if there were a disaster. And uh, we've talked about that a lot of times during our council retreats. And so, I mean, yes, policies are really good, but as, as soon as you have a disaster, policies, it's kind of like getting hit on the chin as we hear from uh, um, from so many professional fighters. As soon as you get hit on the, hit in the head, uh, those, those, all of those things go right out the window. And then you've got a whole different set of, of what are you going to do from that point forward in a, in a, in a professional fight? So um, that's my opening statement to it. My second thought is, is that on the other side of that, you guys just do a staff-wise, I shouldn't say guys. Yet the staff does such an excellent job of bringing us reports on what you do with the money that we authorize for you to spend. You don't go crazy. You give us monthly reports on what you do with the money that you have. You're frugal as all get out from what we can tell. And you do a fantastic job. So it's like, really need a policy? If would that policy be for us? Uh, does our council at the, this moment, do we go crazy? No. If we were to go through two uh election cycles where we all quit and you got a whole new council, would they go crazy? Possibly. So that would be my only thought on why we would ever need a policy. And then what could that council do in two cycles? They could just take that policy and drop it in a trash can. So that's my opening statement.
What do our neighboring cities or, or do they have a policy in place?
Um. Gresham does.
Well, they need one. No, I'm sorry.
Um, but they. I don't believe, I don't believe Fairview or Troutdale have a fund balance policy. Um, Gresham has one. Their general fund, I know for the last few years has been below their stated goal for their po- has been below the stated goal of their policy, and they've been working to try and fix that. Um, and that's part of the reason why you'd have a policy is, you know, um, it should be flagged. Um, if your council has adopted saying this is what we want to have as our stated policy of reserves, that's something that then the auditors or uh some of the budget committee could note is that you have a policy that you, you said you're gonna set aside this much money, but you aren't following your policy. Is there any concern there? Like why, it's kind of, it's kind of a, a layer of checks and balances that for financial oversight and responsibility. So that's kind of the long, a little bit longer answer of who around us has it. Gresham has one. I don't believe Fair and Troutdale do.
So the policy could scrutinize us more?
Yeah. It would, it would, it could add additional scrutiny um from, like I said, outside agencies that take a look. It's really one of the questions they ask is, what are you trying to do and are you successful executing it? And if you're not, then we're gonna ask questions.
Yeah, I think it kind of provides more of a, a thought framework of what's the purpose of some of these resources. Certainly in the past, uh, previous councils has struggled with, okay, we get it. We're saving for some of these things and we get that. We also have this pile of money in the bank, maybe for this purpose or that purpose, but we're not in the purpose of just having money in the bank to have it in the bank. Like what, what's its purpose? Um, and certainly is, is you think of, it makes sense, have it, call it an emergency fund or, you know, however you want, but okay, we need X, whether it's dollars or a percentage of operations, just have in there for the unknown, for the whatever. Then we've got, you know, our projects and things and those accumulate and save. And maybe there's other things, but it really just kind of creates um, you know, a, a thought framework of what are we holding and what are we holding it for? Um, and that's, you know, same with whether it's a water project, you know, why it makes sense. Yes, we need, you know, a million dollars in reserves because we got these projects coming up and that's what it's gonna be used on. Same with sewer, you know, general fund uh less restricted, so then, you know, it's even having more um thought transparency purpose behind it. Again, not that future councils couldn't change it, go in and say, nope, we wanna spend it on a bubble gum or large cutlery. I mean, you.
Part of New City Hall?
Yeah.
Even, even like our, uh, there was the capital sinking fund or reserve fund that we have, there's nothing stopping you all as a newly elected and a franchise council from going back and returning that money that was in the capital reserve to the operating fund and spending it. Uh, it just creates a little more framework of here's why we were putting, and there might be legitimate policy reasons to, you know, no longer save for the replacement of this building or the playground or, you know, a tractor, we'll say we're just gonna pay as you go. But at least it, you know, would flag it for someone on the budget committee or the citizens say, hey, they're pulling money out of the capital reserve fund. Why are we doing that? Is it, are we taking, using one-time resources to pay for ongoing operations and just kind of pushing the problem out a few years? Like what?
I do, uh, you know, and if, if I can, um, this uh, in general, uh, I think we need policies, especially when it comes to money. Um, and in this case of the policy seems to me needs to be maybe more general than specific. So we have a policy as a city council. And Seth, if you go away someday or Greg, uh, what always concerns me with money is the transfer of individuals. And uh, the one thing we don't wanna ever get into is a problem with saying, uh, why weren't you doing that? Uh, to try to uh foresee a potential uh misuse of funds. Or uh, that's, that's obviously the most uh worst case scenario. But I think it gives all of us and the people after us a guideline. And uh, I like guidelines, but I don't wanna, I don't like them so restrictive that you as staff members can't make decisions without coming to the council and asking for a change in policy. Uh, I want you to be able to do your work, but I also want you to be comfortable that you have safeguards should something happen at some point as a, as a staff uh work with the money. So I uh, I think it's a best practice. And uh, if it's, uh, if it can help us uh and not create, uh, as I say, restrictions on choices that you need to have and you need to be able to make as staff, operational choices, then uh, I, I don't think it's a burden. Uh, and I don't think it's uh, it's probably, I don't, I don't think it's overkill at all. Uh, so I, I would support policies in this, in this manner.
Well, uh, counselor, I would agree with you as long as it was, that it was a one for just capital improvements that uh was for like um, equipment replacements, uh, building, city halls, uh, um, a community center and anything of replacement of, of equipment. Um, anything that would promote our city, of course, those type of things. But, but um, for just pencils and pens, I'd be totally against.
Yeah.
But so I love your idea. I'm just, I'm just helping you brainstorm it too.
Yeah, and I think the question here tonight is, do we wanna take a look at a potential policy?
Yeah, yeah. I, that's where I'm agreeing with you on.
I wanna.
I was against it at first.
Counselor Smith, do you have any comments, questions?
Well, my first um thought is if it's not broke, don't fix it. But then I'm listening to everybody and I'm thinking in my mind that it might not be a bad idea to look at other policies that are in effect now, other places, other cities. Um, to see, you know, if, if we want anything that restrictive or that loose, because I'm sure there, there's all different, different strengths of them out there. So yeah, I, I think we should probably take a look at them. Um, I know Seth and his crew are doing a fine job and I, I'd just like it to continue. And um, yeah, let's take a look, I guess.
Yeah, I would, I would agree on, um, I think looking at something would be wise. Again, uh, better to have, better to do things when you don't need it versus like, oh.
Policies are effective.
Need it and um.
Might be too late.
It is, yeah. And, and I, you know, I think other cities do it once they realize, oh.
They're in trouble.
Yeah. So I, I've, I've had that conversation with my teenager where you don't wanna have already fallen off the high wire before you think about a safety net. Think about it. It's too late. You wanna do it when things, you don't think you need it.
Yeah. Um, and then maybe um, staff can talk about uh more um in the next um meeting about uh how it would support our long-term financial goals. Kind of tying that in.
Yeah, I can do that.
And I, I, again, I think the big piece of this is if council or staff, you know, there's a change, they have guidelines on and where, where the direction on where to go, so I think.
Yeah. And again, it doesn't lock you guys into anything, but I think it gives a certain amount of mindfulness. If you wanna change direction, then you have a discussion at that point and explicitly pick a direction that you're going to rather than kind of backing your way into a situation. So, thank you. I'll take that feedback and we'll get something on the calendar for a future staff meeting after we've been able to pull that together.
Awesome. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, Hirow.
Uh, now discussion of Easter extravaganza.
Yeah, enough dusty old ledgers and numbers. Time for some real business. Uh, yes, our Easter extravaganza, which uh we did, uh, would represent what we're trying to move towards and, and start here without having um, you know, event. I mean, hunt is part of the title with, you know, trying to set expectations on or in the past and moving forward. Um, so again, quick history just for everyone. Uh, we, the city's held an Easter hunt uh since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, recent years have been thirty-plus thousand eggs out in our field here and set up by different age groups, three to four, uh, five to six, seven to nine-year-olds. And um, it's quite the, the spectacle. Uh, I think it would be an appropriate word for it. Um, and I think the vast majority of our guests have a, have a good time. It's a very traditional, you know, hunt and we have a lot of eggs. Make sure every guest gets some eggs and candy and whatnot. Uh, it, it does have some, some issues going back to Counselor Smith's, you know, it's not broke, don't fix it. Um, not that it's broke per se. I think there are also just ways to, to make it different. And we discussed this back at your meeting in November where you all said, you know, hey, maybe doing something different, it's, it's time now. Uh, the hunt's big and while big can be fun, in some cases, big doesn't lead to all of our outcomes. So what staff has done is I don't wanna say we, we borrowed from Pumpkin Fest. We didn't, we didn't just copy and paste it. We actually put real thought into creating a meaningful spring Easter uh style event, which still held on the day before Easter, so April nineteenth. Uh, changing the hours from the, the hunt used to be, you know, Easter bunny arrived at nine, uh, you had a few activities, but hunts were, you know, ten, 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 twenty, and ten thirty, uh, you know, on the dot. So this is eleven to two. So kind of um, explore your own adventure uh kind of thing, because we'll have a booth resource area. We've reached out over to fifty organizations, have fourteen confirmations right now, which we think is really good since we did this pre-holiday. Uh, we'll do another push now. If we can hit that kind of twenty to twenty-five, we think that'd be a nice uh setup before, for this style event for comparison. We had, I think, eighteen show up to Pumpkin Fest in that range. So a nice mix, enough, enough there, there. Um, obviously the Easter Bunny and several photo areas, because a lot of people like to dress up for this type of style event. So nice opportunities to capture those memories. Free refreshments, we've programmed um, I think it was hot chocolate and donuts. Yeah, but we'll get later on, do we wanna look at maybe some different offerings or options, but that's what we've programmed in. Petting zoo, uh, face painting, crafts for kids, uh, adding to our uh putt-putt. So we started that with the Pumpkin Fest, very popular. We're gonna add a second hole, uh, but we'll change out the decor to make it all Easter themed. Um, and it's really cool, Story Walk, and I'll get on what that is. So Story Walk uh takes a, takes basically a, a book, typically a children's picture book. Um, you cut out the pages. Now it hurts kind of facing a book, but you, for copyright reasons, when you actually buy physical copies of the book, cut out the pages and you, you placard them um to kind of that laminated cardboard and we thought, you know, do it around the walking trail. So as you explore the, you know, go around the walking trail, you, you read this uh story, which in this case we're recommending, the Easter egg hunt in my town. Um, and we would also then have uh Spanish translated at the bottom. So we'd have, you know, the English book, book, but as the format you kind of see here, there'd be uh Spanish at the bottom and people just at their leg in leisure, walk around the walking uh path and read this story. Uh, another thing, and this is uh, came from Caroline's brain, is uh called On the Hunt, so a scavenger hunt. So still kind of bring hunts into the, into the foray. Uh, the concept would be, we, we have these images here. This is, this is a draft, so we're still working with the businesses to see if we can get, you know, twelve. I think that's the ideal amount. Uh, but you get these images here, they'd be blown up to a larger one and they'd be in like the store window or on the store's bulletin board. And you encourage people to go visit our area businesses. And so as they visit, whether it's um like Jamba Juice, Jersey Mike's, Two Amigos, um, they say, oh yeah, this, you know, character number two is in Key Coffee. So they, you know, write that one on. Um, we release this pre-event, but also have it at the event and then so give it a little time for people to complete it. They turn it back into City Hall for a chance to be entered into a, a drawing for like a gift card or something. We'd have several drawings for that. But again, uh, trying to bring some hunt aspect to the event while also engaging our business community and helping people promote, you know, this is what we have in Wood Village. Uh, this is the draft flyer for the, there's still maybe some tweaks as we fine tune all the last details and features. One thing we really wanted to do was promote, you know, what the event is, which is all the, the features and fun. And also, you know, it's, it's not an egg hunt, uh, at least for this year. And obviously we do more social media and, and, and things like that nature. Uh, we just wanna make sure that, you know, set expectations of, of what it is and what it, you know, won't be. Um, that's how we basically structured it. And now for some other considerations for some discussion from you all. Um, you know, last year's egg hunt is part of the, the city giveaway bags. Obviously we'll have um, you know, eggs per kid. We, we have a dozen eggs per, per kid, per giveaway bag with some candy and things. We put that in the budget. But would you like to see, we did oral hygiene kits, so toothbrush and toothpaste. We did that last year. Would you like that to, to continue? Would you rather have bubbles, coloring books, stickers, kind of, what would you like in our, in the city swag bag? Um, you know, again, simple refreshments, more of this, the, the donuts, coffee cider. Would you rather have, you know, cookies, churros, conchas, um, other types of refreshments to work in there? Um, and just, you know, again, trying to think what you all like to see as part of this event rebrand. Um, you know, we had a sensory room inside City Hall when it was the big hunts to give uh kids who may have some sensory overload uh commerce-based, some sensory things to engage them. Would you want to still have some of that? Um, do you, instead of a scavenger hunt for the business community, whether they just have it like at the park and placing stuff all throughout the park and just kind of during the event? Uh, another consideration is uh traffic control, which certainly was a big part when it was a, here's a very set event uh with, with the hunt, but we also saw it at certainly like Pumpkin Fest where people get there kind of early. Parking gets full up here. Uh, thanks to a partnership with the rentals, we can use their adjacent site, but having some sense of professional traffic control to help manage that and kind of help with the guest experience. Costs seem to be around a thousand dollars. Um, there's, there's minimums. They are, we are looking at licensed, insured and certified uh flaggers basically. So there, there is a, a bit of a cost to that. Um, so things to get you thinking, that was in the, the staff report. So things to get you thinking, that was in the, the staff report there. So, um, kind of open now for thoughts, discussion. Are we hitting the right mark with this event rebrand? What would you like to see?
I really like Carolyn's, uh, idea with the scavenger hunt with the businesses. Um, if like, maybe we can keep that. But then also have it be, um, during, uh, the actual event and then have it, uh, be more interactive where they can just run around, um, the park and our area. And do both if that's feasible and they would turn in their.
Yeah, that would be pretty easy. I think we did something similar last year. It's kind of, we just had a sheet that was like, okay, find a flower that looks like this or this color or some of that kind of stuff. So that's pretty easy.
Yeah.
We could hide different Easter eggs, like cardboard cutout Easter eggs around the, the park frontage.
Yeah, we could have, yeah, it's a good idea.
The, uh, on those, you, those are the options of that you have that bottom box there. Is that right? Your, uh, the activities and then it says options for council consideration. So, uh, the sensory room, we did that last year, didn't we?
Yes.
Uh, so I, you know, certainly I'd, uh, like to see that. In other words, everything on the report, I think seems, uh, seems to be pretty well thought out.
You want it all.
That, uh, yeah. And if that's the, uh, if that's how you have that on air for us to make choices, but, uh, the, uh, and I really liked the, the book walk. And some of those things, uh, you may have to change the book every other year or something, but it seems like some of those things, once they're made, we, we can store them away.
Certainly the, the signage part then, yeah, we would just maybe tape a new book on it. Cause we could do it for Pumpkin Fest with maybe a fall themed book, but a new one for, for Easter.
The, uh, now as far as the, uh, the, uh, traffic control, it's worth it. Uh, it's where I'm at with that. And, and the more so, it just seems like in today's world, when you have crowds, you need to have presence and you need to have presence by professionals. And I know we're still gonna have, Multnomah County would be pleasant. But hire trained people, uh, and the stress for people arriving, stress for people leaving, stress for staff. Uh, and the overall sense of just feeling safe in crowds, uh, is I think very important message to send to our.
And it is, it's not just people, you know, they're not, they're well-trained and certified, but it's also they do parking, event parking management. So it's not just the simple flagger, like we, it's event parking management. They know how to park hundreds, if not tens of thousands of people.
People, we move forward on this.
Counselor Smith, any questions, thoughts, comments?
This is gonna be something that we're gonna have to sell because people don't expect that of us here. They just expect a ton of eggs and, you know, running around like crazy. But, um, how are we gonna advertise this?
Uh, certainly our usual channels, you know, newsletter, Facebook, social media, website, um, probably a good chunk of word of mouth. Uh, Fairview went away. I think it was this past year, actually moved away from their hunt. I think had a positive experience with obviously still refining their plans and, and tweaking it some, but didn't have, um, I don't think they really had any negative community feedback for the, the reimagination of it. Um, just anecdotally, Kelly and I had a different meeting this morning with someone who actually attended the hunt the last couple of years. We just casually mentioned, oh yeah, we're changing this year. He, he seemed quite relieved. Not that his kids didn't have a good time at the hunt. It was also just, he said, it's a lot. And just looking at how you can, um, more casually experience an event and a full family event. Cause again, if you weren't three to nine, there wasn't a lot here for you. No. Trying to incorporate more ages, full family. Um, but you're, you are correct. We will have to make sure people are aware of what the event is, cause it will be very different than if they're expecting an egg hunt, for example.
Yeah, yeah. Especially the families that do two or three in the morning, you know?
I think it would draw the right crowd. And, you know, I think, you know, maybe it's just our community. And, and I think that's the right crowd.
Well, well, Pat, Mary and I, we used to run the booth that we gave out all of the gifts, including the, the forty-eight inch television as the, as the golden ticket. Uh, when we transitioned from that to just giving out the candy, uh, there was absolutely no complaints. So, uh, and remember there were just absolutely tons of eggs that had gifts in them. And that, that booth line was, uh, I can tell you that it was like four hundred yards long. And we would spend three and a half hours running that. And that was really, that was really something to operate. And so it's a whole lot easier now. So I don't think the transition will be any more difficult to go to this new system. As a matter of fact, I think people will be happy to do that than stand there and wait for somebody to say, one, two, three, countdown and then everybody run over everybody. So I think they'll be happy to just see the, something different and new and.
I think as long as people know it's different and new and they're not coming expecting a hunt and then it's what's this? I think that's gonna, the, the key part of our messaging is here's what we're doing this year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're gonna have to really make it known. And I guess we're just gonna have to see. I mean, you won't know till you try.
I, I think, you know, um, pulling a similar style of event from the Pumpkin Fest, with this last Pumpkin Fest being such a success, even with the weather. I, I, you know, I think we have pretty good chances. Uh, I concur with traffic control, you know, with the, um, construction of the restroom. So, you know, piece of that parking going away, um, I think it's, uh, it's, it's, it's important. And then they can help direct to where there is parking available. And, um, I know it's a Saturday, but if that's not sufficient, maybe seeing if we can reach out to McMinimans and seeing their overflow parking that is adjacent here.
Also owned by Reynolds.
By Reynolds. And so, uh, you know, so just seeing those things. I, I do like the, the scavenger hunt with the business. Um, you know, we could reach out to the businesses and see if they're also willing to donate to the prizes, you know, something as, you know, as folks go to their business, they're gonna be buying. And then when they, if, you know, the winners would then go back and buy some more. So just, uh, being a good opportunity to just build that bridge, uh, among, uh, those partners there. Uh, but I think, I think we have something here.
Just a list of activities from Hirow's computer. I'm like, I don't have to travel over here. Um, but I mean, that's a huge list. And I think as a parent, um, the chaos that I've experienced in, in my past, um, and trying to capture a moment. You know, you can't pick your kid out of the crowd, you know, and, and this you're able to capture different moments, um, whether it's our photo station or a petting zoo. So.
And I think this really buys into our, our, one of our city goals of intentional community. I think we're being intentional of how we serve our community and not just do a massive serve. And so understanding.
It allows for those conversations like we can have at night out, like we have at Pumpkin Fest, you know, the, the egg hunt. And for, for, you know, reasonable reasons, people are focused, ooh, it's, it's five minutes to ten. I, I gotta go. I gotta get my, my spot. Uh, so everyone's, you know, focused on that, which was, you know, that's the purpose. It's an egg hunt. Hopefully, again, this allows us for more back and forth, uh, casual, but no less meaningful, um, event.
Perfect. So staff have enough.
You want it all. Got it. Parking management. Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to, uh, discussion on Main Streets on Halsey.
Right. Kind of another blast from the past. Uh, we haven't talked about this for about a year. And when we brought it back last, it was kind of, hey, this seems to be going a little oddly and what do we want our involvement to be? Well, the, the last effort has concluded. It concluded some time ago, kind of unceremoniously. So we're bringing you the results of the updated street template and kind of, um, staff's thoughts on that, where you would like to go with it. So again, you're not making any decisions tonight on anything you're seeing, but more just providing directions. If you would like to see something for adoption, what that looks like. There is a lot to this slide because there's some updated graphics and things, but I'm gonna try to get through it quickly. So you have the information. And we have a good discussion, but it's kind of two years worth of work and about twenty slides. So, um, but again, a bit of background for everybody. This whole effort of Main Street some policy started in twenty sixteen as a three cities effort. I started then involving Multnomah County, some state agencies, and it really looked along this about three mile corridor for economic opportunity, community building opportunity. And kind of trying to build a downtown feel to Halsey that stretches to three communities that acknowledge your uniqueness, but has, um, cohesive elements together. Uh, there's a full economic analysis of what's viable, um, whole land use review and update, and then followed by this current now roadway update. There was a, a branding or marketing effort tossed in there. It failed spectacularly. Um, so I don't really talk about that. Um, I'm not surprised by it. Uh, again, you could have three communities, three different ideas of what a perfect policy is. So we never got anywhere with that. So I just kind of leave that out. But basically, yeah, the idea is to build a policy inclusive manner that uplifts the community. This is that whole stretch of the corridor. Uh, so basically, you know, two hundred and third all the way to two fifty-seventh, to think about it simplistically. Throughout that, there are different nodes or sections. Uh, so you have a lot of Fairview and even through Fairview, it kind of morphs between, you know, there's a school, a lot of residential, but then they're trying to build out some commercial. For Wood Village, while we do have a, a smattering of residential and commercial, the whole zone is neighborhood commercial. So the long-term vision is kind of that mixed use, commercial corridor. What also makes Wood Village unique from the other communities is our manufacturing and light industrial just to the north that is accessed off of Halsey that I think we feel is vital to our community and provides great benefit to our community and region. So, um, Halsey is kind of a quasi freight route for us as they need supplies and equipment or shipping out product, which is different than the other two cities. For Troutdale, it's pretty much the Ed Field section is their elephant in the room. And as you get through Ed Field again, it's pretty standard residential as you move towards their downtown. So technically this effort started in twenty twenty, uh, actually didn't get underway until twenty twenty-two. And it really looked at the whole element of the street template. So the whole cross-section and then trying to focus on, you know, whether it's lighting, landscape, street furniture connections. For Wood Village, we were really interested in kind of those pocket park plaza, street, um, furniture elements where we can do enhanced crossings and what can we do, especially around like lighting and just the feeling of, I won't say safety per se, but comfortability, walkability and all of that for our section. Now, um, certainly a lot of interest in Ed Field since it's completely unapproved. And then Fairview had, um, a lot of visions for it. So this is the scope of work that the consultant's team, uh, helped with. So they looked at all the plans, policy standards, a lot, it's a county road. So reviewed all the county standards and practices. How the road operates, or in some cases doesn't operate, what could it, what could it be? And so there's a lot of preliminary designs evaluated, reevaluated. There is a criteria developed that helped rank different elements. Uh, the criteria is really developed by that consultant team, um, looking at, you know, active transportation. So walking, biking, um, sense of place. It did involve some local agencies and by community, it was some engagement with like local businesses and local community. But again, um, trying not to rag on the process, but we as Wood Village had done a lot of outreach engagement around Halsey and kind of community. This process recycled a lot of that. So it was just kind of more hearing the same and people started getting a little more, um, outreach fatigue, I think, if I could use that word. Cause again, we weren't hearing anything new. They, yeah, they'd like a place they could go from their home, walk towards, it's well lit. There's a lot of amenities, a lot of features. They feel safe, comfortable. Um, we already knew that. And obviously, um, if people said, what could be done differently? We heard a lot about Ed Field, kind of anything you could do to make that better, you know? Add a wider shoulder, add some lighting. Um, that was what we heard most of through our outreach and engagement. So what the consultant came up with was they created a residential cross-section, a commercial cross-section, and what I call the Ed Field cross-section. They also added intersection treatments. We didn't ask them to do that. I think that was county interjecting some. Uh, so there was a lot of back and forth and battling on that. Another great thing that wasn't necessarily part of it, but we actually love was looking at the whole corridor for pedestrian crossings. So it was rapid flashing, protected crossings. I got a whole layout for those. Unfortunately, what this did do, it lacks some complete detail, things that we heard most from our community that they valued, such as what can we do about increasing lighting? And that's not necessarily, you know, impacting the ambient lighting, but how do we direct it to the street, to the sidewalk? So people can be seen and feel safe. What do we do about rideaway issues, utility conflicts, um, adjacent land uses? Nothing on any of that, unfortunately. But what did come up? So this is the cross-section for the residential area. This wouldn't be anywhere in Wood Village. This is more, uh, for the Fairview section. Uh, until part of its commercial corridor or the latter part of the Troutdale one. So again, the street itself looks very similar. It has travel lanes, center turn lanes. But what it did do is move the bike lane to basically sidewalk grade. It's not a combined multi-level pathway like you'd see on Arata. It's actually trying to be separated with this buffer thing and potentially paved with a different material to give, this is different, uh, than the sidewalk and it's different than the street. Again, asked ten people in the room, if this is the right idea, you'd get ten different responses, but it was kind of the common denominator. Get the bikes off the street. So this is the residential one. Again, not really behind us. For us though, commercial, uh, this should look pretty familiar, especially the street side. You've got two travel lanes, center turn lane, parking on one side of the street. That's exactly what we, we have today. But for, again, we have our bike lanes on the street. This takes them again, sidewalk adjacent. There was an alternative developed just for Fairview as, uh, there's a part of Fairview from Village Street to two twenty-third. They'd like to have some on-street parking as they're building out the commercial core. So it takes that same concept, removes the center turn lane and adds parking one side or both sides of the street. Again, people had their thoughts and views on that. Um, but it was built for Fairview. And then the Ed Field section is essentially the commercial corridor section. So again, nothing new there, except it doesn't have any on-street parking. That's the main difference. For intersection treatments, again, kind of long-term, um, the thought would be, you know, limiting the accesses, that gas station right on the corner there. This is the Fairview Food Plaza. So restrict access to those driveways. Do some additional enhanced markings, but you know, do some good things around, um, advanced pedestrian leads. So they actually, the pedestrian could cross sooner than the cross traffic starts. Um, and it has the countdown timer. So some, some nice things there. Uh, for two thirty-eighth, for our intersection, they really wanted to do some crazy things with curb bump outs. And I said, absolutely not. I will fall on that sort of, if I have to, because this is a freight route, not just for two thirty-eighth, but for Halsey for us. We need, we have trucks that turn on there, making deliveries, shipping out product. Uh, travelers with campers, RVs that live here, uh, we need to retain these turning radiuses. So fought, fought the battle on that. So basically we got kind of the same as the Fairview treatment, maybe do some enhanced painting things, um, in some better, um, you know, pedestrian crossing elements. And then same for two fifty-seventh. This is what's, yes.
What's advanced stop lines?
It pushes so the stop bar, you actually stop further back than at the crosswalk line. So you're like three feet that, there's a, it's a new line. It's a new stripe. So you're a little further back than the actual crosswalk bar. Um, enhanced crossings for the whole quarter. This is a pretty cool little diagram. It outlines what crossings are existing. And then which ones that exist that could use some near-term improvements or new ones in the long term and, or short term, and then new ones in long term or just, uh, current ones in the long term. So, you know, this, this is here right in front of our park. It's more of an exist long-term, only because it's still around the driveways. It's, you know, it's a little tricky if you're in the homeowner, you know, across the way or trying to turn left in our parking lot, not quite optimal, but that would be more done if things redevelop and driveways adjust. So, um, but you see our other two existing ones on there are perfect and just fine. Uh, we get our other two that we hope to get. So this would be closer to the bottle drop one. And this is closer to Wood Village Boulevard. But you see, you know, it's, it's quite remarkable to think this whole section of corridor and, you know, thinking there's only a handful of signaled intersections, but look at all the crossing opportunities for people. That's quite remarkable. Long-term costs in this was in twenty twenty-four dollars. So, you know, you can kick those up another notch, but basically you're looking at sixty million dollars. Um, and that's a pretty rough cost because again, there's going to be a lot of utility conflicts, a lot of rideaway issues to adjust. I wouldn't be surprised if this isn't pushing a hundred million dollars to do the whole stretch as presented and proposed. Now, the consultant team did come up with some, um, near-term solutions to try to make things a little better, a little more comfortable. So the proposal basically was, and this is for the entire stretch of policy, not including Ed Field. You kind of put the lanes, uh, you make them a little narrower and you create a buffer between, um, whether it's a driving lane or if there's on-street parking and the bike lane. They did this up off of Gleason, uh, where they added kind of a little, little buffer. So same kind of concept is you, you start creating a bit of buffering for the bike lane. So same kind of concept, is you start creating a bit of buffering for the bike lane, narrowing the lanes just a little bit, conserve freight traffic. I made it very clear, we need freight traffic, but enough to get some buffer between the bike lane. Nothing with the sidewalks, nothing with the landscape strips. Unfortunately, for Ed Field, the near-term solution wasn't much to say six-foot shoulder. I mean, right now, depending on where you're at, you may get a three-foot shoulder, so I think the idea is just actually get a true six-foot shoulder. Is it better than what's there? Sure, it's disappointing that we can't get an actual near-term. Great, maybe we just get some asphalt and pave an off-street pathway on one side of the street or something. I'd still like to push for something more than what's there now, and something more than that. Near-term intersection improvements, they only gave a graphic for 223rd, but the idea is the same. You do kind of the green markings for bike lanes, as they may be getting closer to intersections or crossing through traffic, and doing, again, the improved countdown lighting. I'd like to see also ADA ramps improved at all those key intersections. Someone who's now assisted someone in mobility device, you can really tell the difference and appreciate even things built 10 years ago. The new ADA standards are so much better if you're in a wheelchair mobility device. So getting those built out would be a nice thing, I think, to add to our near-term intersection improvements. Near-term crossings, so again, this takes that big map and just narrows it down to what could be, you know, whether it exists and needs adjusted, or just brand-new. So again, the two still in Wood Village, kind of by bottle drop closer to Wood Village Boulevard, are in the near-term to-do list. Near-term costs, so it depends, you know, and this isn't including the crossings. I want to make that clear. This is more of just that lane restriping, lane reconfiguration. If you just kind of grind the markings out and repaint it, you're looking close to $1 million. If you actually do a grind and overlay, which I think Halsey could use, you're looking at probably closer to four and a half, maybe even $5 million for the entire stretch. So it's worth pointing out, cities don't have this money, and the counties don't have this money, so it's unclear where this money would come from. So again, this came from the consultants as looking at the plan implementation, and where we're at, this is more conceptual, so you couldn't even call it like 10% plans. To do initial plans, you'd have to do further rideaway analysis, because what I pointed out to the consultant team is, you think Halsey, the middle of Halsey is the middle of the rideaway. It is not. Depending on where you're at with Halsey, that rideaway shifts actually quite dramatically, which is what we learned when we tried to put the crosswalk by bottle drop, for example. That backside of sidewalk by bottle drop is the northern end of that rideaway on Halsey, so everything has to shift to the south, you know, 20-some-odd feet. And so how does that work through, you know, three and a half mile corridor, you're kind of weaving in and about? Not necessarily a bad thing, but you have to understand you're blowing out entire improved portions of a roadway to kind of rebuild that bigger vision. So there's a lot to do. Some of this is happening right now regardless, so Trimeste's looking at bus stops, bus stop, let me call it reconfiguration, it's really bus stop elimination, and there's been some pushback from the local community about that. But looking at where bus stops may ultimately land, and then where can we put crossings around there? Same thing with ADA ramps, and, you know, if county maintenance is going to start painting the little bike box things, they're going to do that regardless, so. But right now, is everything is kind of, the Halsey Street template as a whole is kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for cities to do something. County said they're not going to move until the cities move. Troutdale adopted it, I think it was back in October. Fairview is having internal discussions between like its city council, its economic development board, and its planning commission about, you know, which is the right idea? Because again, you can ask 10 people, and they'll have a different vision. For Wood Village, you know, adopting the plan kind of as-is, I think this has some practical concerns. Again, the overall cost, is it a perfect street? No. If this was a three and a half mile stretch of nothing, that we had the opportunity to say, what is this corridor going to be? I think this is perfectly fine and appropriate, and you build it out that way. But there's a lot of ways and a lot of needs to spend, you know, upwards of potentially $100 million on stuff that doesn't have any improvements. And there are things I think we can focus on short-term that have long-term value, such as, let's optimize that street lighting, for example. Let's look at our landscaping and other cost-effective solutions to make Halsey a little more attractive, a little more comfortable. So all that to say, there are a lot of next steps you all can decide to take as a governing board. You can say, no, let's just adopt the whole plan, and we'll just, you know, as money opportunity come by, great, we'll work on it. In talking with the county and other cities, my approach was, I said, you know, I'm not comfortable adopting the whole plan. I can present to my governing board, yes, we can adopt the plan with priorities. We want to focus on things like lighting, crossings, curb ramps, those types of things that we've heard are important to our community. And if, again, operators come up to do some more work on the overall template, that's fine, but we're not necessarily going to be supportive of those efforts until kind of the larger network around us is improved. Again, we have got places on Sandy, not in Wood Village, but adjacent to us, no sidewalks. That's not okay. So, or we just say, nope, we're not going to adopt this. It's kind of ran its course, and we're done. So that's kind of the spectrum of the Halsey plan, again, not asking to adopt it tonight, but certainly just help give us direction, so we could bring something back to you if you'd like to see that for adoption consideration. So with that, what questions you have, and how may I help answer them?
Councilor Smith, you got any questions, concerns?
Well, there's got to be priorities, but I'm just wondering what the priorities would be if we adopt it with priorities. That would be my only question, and can we really do anything without cooperation from the other two cities on this? And also without a lot of money from other government agencies?
Short answer is, we can, there's still a lot we can do without the county, without the other cities. Example, we could do our own streetlight study. We have and will continue to push for, again, those pedestrian crossings. We can certainly do that, even landscaping, for example. We can work kind of with us in conjunction with the county, but in terms of priorities, you all tell me what the priorities are and how we bake that into any kind of adoption.
But basically, the funds that we provide are just the staff, right?
For this effort, it was just staff. We didn't have any actual matching dollars. For capital, we've gone after grants and things to complete the project.
So that answers that part of it, Pat. I know you're new back on the council, so you're not privy to that information till right now.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, we haven't had a lot of actual cash into really any of the Main Streets efforts other than staff time. There's been some, you know, cash match or something, but relatively small compared to the, probably close to $1 million in planning work, from economic studies to the actual zoning code update, that was actually quite good, to this work.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we have to kind of get this on the county's road plan before they even consider. I know it's on there, but adopting the whole thing would help the county at least consider it as a project that they would.
Correct, so.
Since it's a county road.
If we do nothing, the county said they're not going to do anything, so the template is basically the template that we have today. The county said if the three cities adopt it, and opportunity arises, great, we can look at revising the street template.
If you, and, yeah, Mayor's question is a good one, because nothing gets done very quick, whether it's $1 million or $250,000. So to move this forward, my priority is, number one, safety. There's not enough money to do much, even if we had close to a million. But my priority is the crosswalks, lighting, the list of things that even the consultant put on near-term solutions. So, and I would say, I like vegetation, you know, enhancements and things, but still, this stretch of road is very dangerous. And whatever we can do down at Ed Field, if we can put another three feet, something there.
Start.
But focus on safety items, stay involved in this, so that we can, if it takes three cities to move it forward in some year, then let's make sure the county has the support from our three cities to keep it on transportation plans in the future. So if I got it right, then that's what they really need, if we're going to keep it on the future transportation plans that the three cities have an agreement, then I think we need to push forward with the near-term solutions focused on safety.
Yeah, and I think that would also help if the county were to overlay or potentially even restripe, getting those opportunities to, again, not change the roadway template with the width, but change how it functions. There could be opportunities for that.
That we're all on board on the priority with the safety.
Sounds like you're more interested in the short-term potential option focused on safety. I'm happy to bring something back that really hones in on that and refines it, that then would signal the county, here is our intent, and our other partners, here's our intent and interest in this, and all also make sure Ed Field is in there as well.
I have a quick question on it, if I can ask. So if we adopt the new road template, and that vacant property over there goes to develop, are they going to have to build part of that, or is this only getting built if the whole road's getting done?
So that's been a question asked a lot, you know, with the bulk of Halsey now mostly developed, you can't do a piecemeal development by development. So there is a thought, we'll develop, then pays into a pot of money to accumulate for a large massive project, or it's just done as one mega project, however that may work, that hasn't been sorted out, and the county can't really adopt a new template that would change the roadway, they can restripe it and things. But to really alter it towards that longer-term, what was developed, they're probably several years away from actually creating, here is the road standard. So if a developer were to come in, oh, you need to adjust it to do this, that's years away, because there isn't, that's the adopted template, and that won't change until this is more engineered out. And frankly, you know, focus on the short-term stuff, is what I'm hearing. So yeah, the restriping as appropriate, and safety features, let's focus on that, is what I, was what I just kind of heard to bring back for your adoption consideration. Did I capture it?
Yeah.
Thumbs up, man.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Now we'll go to Director of Finance report.
Mayor, councils? Included in your packet is the Finance Director's report for month ended in December. Can't remember what month we're in. Reason why this is at this meeting, so there's, we only had one meeting in December, so you never got the November reports. We've included the November, and then I also got the Decembers at your first council meeting, so you have kind of the updated numbers. Not much to talk about here. Business income taxes are on track to come in for budget numbers, but might be down slightly from last year's number. And then we had our big month of property tax revenues roll in, so we've, we got the money we were expecting to get, and the county didn't, county didn't screw anything up majorly this year, happy to report. So that's it for the Finance Director's report. If you have any questions about either of the months that were included in your packet, happy to entertain questions.
Councilor Smith, any questions?
No, no questions.
Any questions here on council?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one off-agenda item very quickly. It relates to our council retreat. We did hear that a councilor may have had a conflict. That turns out not to be the case, but then it kind of got us talking. If we had to push it out, that may not be a bad thing, given, I don't want to say AP Triton is, our consultant for the fire stuff is behind, that should be at your next meeting, giving an update. But getting the 24 numbers of response, which is critical to how, you know, what the service demand and load is, it's taking a little longer than anticipated, and it's not the fault of Gresham, it's not the fault of them, it's just the nature of the data and how they're trying to work with it to really understand it. So given that the big part of our retreat this year is going to be focused on fire, its future solutions, you know, hopefully, we have a solution to the fire IGA renewal here in a few weeks, we can give an update on that. Would you want to push the retreat back a few weeks to have more of a comprehensive, like, first draft of the AP Triton report? Or would you rather keep it that March 1st date, and we present the best we can with what we have from them? It might be possible, we have like an early draft, March 1st, but not maybe all the details sussed out versus a few weeks later, might be more of a matured report, certainly not final yet. But since we started having to have the conversation, okay, we need all of our counselors at the retreat, we thought, well, you know, March 1st still works, still at least ask that question.
Is there a proposed date of, what's the other date in March, are you guys thinking?
You would have to tell us, because everyone worked to kind of make sure that date was clear, so this may take some time for you all to think, oh, I'm not available this date, there's spring break, a lot of considerations with that.
Yeah.
Where I was at on this is, and we're going to be traveling, as you know, in various times, but I had bought a ticket to fly back from Tucson for the 1st. But I would prefer to cancel that ticket, you put it in my little money account, you know, with Alaska, and come back on the 22nd.
I think that's the week of spring, like.
It's a Saturday, it's two.
22nd of.
Yeah. Given that, that does give.
A few more weeks, correct. Again.
It works for me, too. Okay.
Councilor Smith, how does the 22nd sound?
Sounds fine to me.
Works for me.
And I think, you know, from a staff perspective, typically, we like to hold the retreat March time, because it helps really develop the budget and things, but given this retreat's heavily focused on fire, and we'll also have our five-year, and there'll be some other stuff to talk about, I think staff can really probably bake 90-plus percent of the budget, because some stuff is just, it is what it is this coming year, and the big story is future of fire, short-term solutions, and that longer-term option. So if March 22nd works, I think we can have more there for you from AP Triton in the industry report. Again, hopefully, we know where we're at with Gresham, so we can plan for that and talk about that, and, you know, PR stuff and whatnot. But, you know, if like we want it March 1st, we can make that work, too.
No, I think it's wise to push it later to get a better understanding of the report from AP Triton, and just everything you're mentioning, you know, hopefully, we do have a response from Gresham by then, and we can just have a better discussion of what the future for us holds, so.
So you're saying what date then?
March 22nd.
Oh, March 22nd.
Yeah.
That's National Goof Off Day.
Perfect.
Oh, funny. We're not building the agenda right now, but I have a note.
Of course you have that on your calendar.
Yeah, goof-off day.
Yeah, I don't even have that on my calendar.
Don't you?
Yeah. Anyway, we're not building the calendar, but Caroline's report on the food, on our holiday food drive, there's a whole concept there that might be a good conversation at the retreat.
We're actually bringing that, your first meeting in February.
Okay.
To talk about the city's future, and I'll just call it food insecurity, and what our role can be with that. And by chance, we had a great meeting this morning with, I think, potential.
Well, if we have, that's good. We have that discussion, then if it needs time, we can roll into that retreat.
Retreat, or other future council meetings, or it goes into the budget discussion, what we want to program those dollars for.
Perfect.
Important conversations.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Nope.
Trying to cancel a meeting already.
Mark, are you?
Yeah, we're done with the.
I thought I'd give a report on my medical.
Yeah.
Condition, if that was all right. Okay. So on the 18th, I believe it was, of November, I found that I had a. I found that I had a problem and it was with my leg. And it was bugging me and I had a hotspot and I never had one before. So I told my wife or son, they were both at the house, it was a Sunday. And I said, who's taking me to the hospital? And because this thing was just shot right up my groin and I said, I said, one of you guys are taking me. So try to make a long story short, if I can possibly do that. So I got to the VA hospital. My wife wanted me to go to local and I prayed about it and went, no, 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 I'm going up to the VA. And so when I got there, the doctor looked at it and said, you've got a blood clot in my leg. And so they didn't have anybody on staff to check it. So they said, you hurt anywhere else? And I said, yeah, my stomach's been killing me and it goes into my back. And so they, they said, we're gonna do a CT scan. And so I came out of that and they told me that I had an abnormal pancreas. And I went, oh, okay. They said, go home, we're gonna give you a shot in my belly for blood clots. And so I did. And I came back the next morning and they put us in a quiet room, which I thought was kind of strange, but I didn't read the paperwork, which I should have. And so I was walking in the hallway, I had to use the restroom. And there was a, the nurse that was helping me the night before, he said, oh, Mr. Clark, I am so sorry. That was you last night. I am so sorry that you have pancreatic cancer. That's what he says to me. So I'm consoling him and I'm telling him, it's okay. So I'm shaking his hand. And that's how I got told that I had pancreatic cancer. So I went, yeah, it's okay. No problem. Yeah. He says, man, we all feel so bad for you. I went, yeah, yeah. So I went back into this, into this room that I, I recognized because I worked in a hospital, right, for many years. And I said, I told Mary, I said, I know what they're, what they're doing with me in here. I said, this is where they birth babies really fast, you know, because this is how they set it up. And so if mom needs to scream or do whatever, you know, they can do this in a quiet room. I said, Mary, it's bad news. And she went, what? Don't tell me that. And I said, well, okay, I won't tell you. So then they came and got me out of there and they moved us into even a quieter room. And she says, what are they doing with us? And I said, well, they're, they're setting up to tell us some really bad news. And she says, well, how do you know that? And I said, well, the nurse last night told me. I said, do you want to hear it from me or do you want to hear it from somebody else? And she says, well, now you're scaring me. And I said, well, I think you should hear it from me. So I told her and she says, how do you know that? And I said, well, because the nurse from last night told me. Well, why would he do that? So anyway, so this doctor comes in and he's just hem hawing around and Mary finally just said, look, I just need to know what size boat to buy and a lure to get for my next husband. That's what she finally told him, you know, I need to find a really good lure for my next husband. So anyway, so we just planned from that moment on, as we're sitting there by ourselves, of plan for the worst and hope for the best. And so throughout this entire process, we've had lots of people that are praying for us and they're helping us a lot. Like today, I had a friend come over and help me work on my truck today because I can't take my own seat out by myself. We rebuilt my seat in my truck. I've had tons, I've got 40 doctors working with me through the VAA and with OSHU. And I've been accepted into a trial from the FDA because I'm so healthy otherwise. And I learned just a few weeks ago, and I've been sharing this with John, just so you know, that I've been accepted into a trial that there's 176 people that fall into one half of it and 176 people into another half. And I was telling John that I said, I don't know which side I'm gonna be on on this. And I won't know until Friday of where, what side I'm on. And either I'm gonna go into a trial of where I wait for surgery, four months and go into chemotherapy, which I've already been set up for a PIC, what do they call it?
Port.
A port, yes, that goes into my chest. That does, they do that no matter what, right? And then I wait four months before I have, I cannot believe what they're gonna do. They're gonna take out a good portion of my stomach. They're gonna remove the head of my pancreas where it connects into my upper intestine. They're gonna remove my gallbladder. I've got the largest stone in there. It's four and a half inches long. And it's about two and a half inches thick. And it's like two and a half inches wide. It's the largest stone that the technician has ever found in the human body. And she's been doing it for 20 years. So they're gonna remove that and then they're gonna remove about six inches of my, of my duodenum, as they call it, which is your, which is your upper intestine. And they're gonna rebuild this whole section. And I mean, like, I'm gonna live through this? And they've given me, the other part is, is because I'm at stage one, which I finally, I had to wait two months to find that out, right? They, they've told me that I have a 50 50 chance of being cured. That's just amazing. So that's why, because I don't smoke, I don't drink. I, I don't drink coffee or tea. And they've said that even if I was drinking more than a cup of coffee a day or tea a day, I wouldn't even be allowed into this, into the study. And the study's been going on now for a year and a half. They just don't have the people to be able to go into this study to do this. They would really like to have had this study over after one year and it's taking this long to get into it. They don't know how many people that are, that got waiting to get in. So really fortunate, I like to run and be very active now. Remember when I asked to get off the park and my wife was off? That's when we found out, right? So the other part is, is that now they're telling me to stay active, okay? So this, during this council meeting, I ate the wrong thing at dinner. Okay, so I was hurting. Now I'm not hurting, okay? But three hour long meetings with, with, I have to look at the minutes here, just for me with, whoops. Where, where's, with the EMC, EMUCTAC, I am not gonna be able to last sitting in a chair for that. So Mayor, you're gonna have to find somebody else for taking these fights for that. No, I, I didn't go to it in November or December and I apologize for that, but we'll have to find somebody else.
I think they actually canceled the December one, didn't they?
I believe so. And then they canceled January too.
So you're, you picked a good time not to be able to attend.
Yeah, they, they've, I cancel that too. They, they, they've updated this. They've asked me to, you know, they made a lot of changes to it and they've asked me to accept them or decline right now for their meeting. So I was like, well, I'm just gonna wait till I come to the council meeting here. I had to learn to eat completely different. Just, it's just been a real rough road. They've gone in through my mouth and went through my stomach and into my intestine and collected a sample from my, from my pancreas to prove that I had cancer, which they did. And they know what kind it is. It's just amazing, all the stuff that goes on. How important, you can't live without a pancreas. That much I did know, but I didn't know that the liver and gallbladder both discharge their waste into your pancreas. That's why you can't live without it. So, yeah, I won't go into the gory details of it, but yeah, it's really amazing. I have to drink tons of water and I have to eat something. I'm losing weight like crazy, so I have to eat constantly, but very small meals. Otherwise it wants to come back up this way. So this is a real challenge. So I, as long as I can stay on the council, that's, that's what I'd like to do. Because that's what they told me to do is stay, stay busy. I've been sleeping like crazy. A couple of Sundays ago, I, I slept for almost 18 hours. As it was the only thing, I was the only thing I found comfortable to do. And then, then I've also found that if I'm, I can't sit for a long time. That's why you saw me get up. So, yeah, I just have to, so I'm using my, I'm running my little cars, I'm, I'm working with my grandkids a lot. And it's welcome to cancer. It's surreal.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, you're welcome.
We can support you.
Yeah.
We're all here.
Yeah. You guys are my rock. I play guitar now with all my friends. And I'll stop and get up and walk around a little bit or put my guitar on and play. That's what I'm doing with them. So, yeah. Yeah. So I appreciate your support. I know that lots of love here, so that's it.
Well, thanks for sharing. I think we'll talk with Greg and figure out committee appointments if need be and, you know, that aspect of that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for the? I just wanna, once again, thank John for his leadership this last two years. And an awesome mayor and, and, and a positive role model for myself. And just I know he is the reason why the city's also in a great position with partners, regional partners around the area. So wow, and thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome.
One more real quick comment. Aren't we fortunate in Wood Village to have two former mayors on our city council? I mean, what other city can say something like that?
Yeah.
Greg, would you have any idea?
If we did, it wouldn't be for long from other cities typically, you know, they're around us. This isn't uncommon one around the country where the council appoints their own mayor and council president. But certainly other cities where it's the mayor's a position, I think it'd be very rare if you're not elected mayor to then come back on the council. I don't.
And then on top of that, we have three previous council presidents. One, two, three.
Two previous mayors plus the current mayor and yeah, I mean, it's.
Have you been the council president before?
No. He just jumped straight to the head.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments and I, I think you know this too. I'm not getting off. I, I don't, I'm not staying on as a mayor because I didn't like the job. I do know we have excellent leadership on this council and it is opportunities for other to, others to lead. I'm also gonna travel some. This, you know, depending on the council, my travel, the mayor's time does take more time. And it's harder to plan trips around meetings that you need to be at. And then the virtual connectivity in various places. So we will be traveling and Jan has been really, I mean, she's been a great support for me. Cause I can't do a lot of electronic stuff, but she's been a great support. But we will, I will say, we will enjoy having a little more freedom in our travels. So thanks very much for all of you and all the support you've given me.
That will, will adjourn.